Good evening. Welcome to this forum of candidates running for Montgomery County Board of Education, brought to you by Bethesda Beat and Bethesda Magazine. Thank you for joining us. This event is being recorded. It will be available later this week on YouTube and on BethesdaMagazine.com. I am your moderator and talent executive editor of Bethesda Magazine and Bethesda Beat. We are part of Z Pop Media, the leading media company in Montgomery County. Bethesda Beat is an award-winning site covering breaking news and key issues, not just in the Bethesda area, but across the county, particularly with county education, county government, and public safety. Bethesda Magazine is an award-winning long-form publication that covers the people, places, and issues in Montgomery County and Upper Northwest Washington DC. Today, we are delighted to hear from candidates for the at-large school board seat, as well as candidates for districts one, three, and five. Every registered voter in the county can vote in each school board race, even though district candidates must live in the district they represent. For this evening's forum, translation to Spanish, French, and other languages, as well as closed captioning are available through Zoom. In terms of the format, after the introductory question, questions will be posed to individual candidates. They will have 90 seconds to respond to each question, and fellow candidates have 40 seconds for rebuttal if they wish. Ashley Fletcher will flag candidates with a sign as their time winds down. At the end of the allotted time, the candidate will be permitted to finish their sentence, then we'll be moving on. We do plan to present some questions selected from audience members. Please submit yours in the chat. Now, I am pleased to introduce the candidates. For District One, Grace Rivera Owen. Esther Wells also had RSVP'd in the affirmative. She is not here yet, but we are hoping that she will join us. For District Three, Scott Joftis and Julie Yang. For District Five, Brenda Wolf. Valerie Call, the other candidate for District Five, is unable to join us tonight. For at-large, Carla Silvestri. Mike Erickson, the other candidate for at-large, did not respond to our invitations. We'll open by giving the candidates a chance to introduce themselves, while at the same time asking them to address our first question. Please describe the number-one objective you would seek to accomplish as a member of the school board. We'll begin in alphabetical order, starting with Mr. Joftis. 90 seconds.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to be here. After Pat O'Neil passed away, the school board unanimously selected me to complete her term. Since then, I've been endorsed by The Washington Post, which noted that I'm uniquely qualified to help increase student achievement in MCPS. I've also been endorsed by Ike Leggett, the Black Democrats of Montgomery County, the Latino Democrats of Montgomery County, the past three superintendents of MCPS, the past presidents of the Women's Democratic Club, the past two presidents of the MCCPTA, SEIU, and Tom Perez. And here's what my political hero Jamie Raskin has said: "We're benefiting from Scott's work with school districts across the country and his insight as a professor of educational leadership. We're lucky to have him where he's using his expertise on behalf of our students and our schools." Excuse me. Why are these leaders supporting me? First, I've been dedicated to equity my entire professional life as a teacher, advocate, advisor to districts, and now board member. Second, these board members know that I understand how boards affect positive change. For 18 years, I've run a small business that advises superintendents and school boards. For the past 12 years, I've served as an adjunct professor at George Washington's Graduate School of Education. I'll have more to say about how these experiences translate into being an effective school board member for Montgomery County. But for now, let me just say, to answer your question, my number-one priority will be to continue supporting the mental health of our students and our staff. Going into the pandemic, we were almost at crisis levels, arguably at crisis levels. And I would argue that since the pandemic has occurred, we are at a crisis. We need to address this immediately, and we need to do so effectively, which will require a systems approach, which I will try to address in my future answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Joftis. Ms. Rivera Owen.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I am a first-generation graduate from Montgomery County Public Schools. All my children have attended MCPs schools, including my youngest, who graduated in the height of the pandemic in 2020. I am a very involved parent of the PTAs. I am very involved in my community. I have been an advocate for over 30 years. I have the great honor to be endorsed by the wonderful incumbent Judy, Dr. Judy Daka, who was also, who I met in my high school years as one of the shadowing vice principals, I guess it's for high school, many years ago. I am a product of the school system. I attended Montgomery College, and then I went on to Pitt College. I have worked with many young people and ran an after-school program as well. And I just think that Montgomery County is one of the most wonderful communities in the country and is very inclusive and welcoming to all. And I have experienced that firsthand, and I want to make sure that our growth with the diversity that we have seen, that our diversity is a strength, that we are continued to be inclusive, and to make sure that we all work together to ensure that every child can achieve their potential. So, on your question, for me, I have seen the toll that this pandemic has taken directly on our communities, especially on our young people. I saw that directly with my son by him not having any of the rites of passages in 2020. And what that has happened with our kids from kindergarten through our seniors. So, mental health support, not just for our students, but also for our teachers and staff.
Thank you. Ms. Silvestri.
Good evening. Buenas noches. I am Carla Silvestri. I'm the current Vice President of the Board of Education. But first and foremost, I am the mother of two girls, one a graduate of our school system now at the University of Maryland, and a sophomore in our high school, in one of our high schools. I work at Montgomery College. I am the Director of Community Engagement, and my job is to help our county residents connect with Montgomery College, either with the associate's degree side or to obtain workforce development training to better their lives. I have a master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania in teaching English as a second language, and over 25 years of experience in youth development, community engagement, workforce development, and education. I bring a unique perspective to the board because I, every day, I see the education continuum from pre-K to graduation to post-secondary to the workforce. I've been recently endorsed by The Washington Post, and they said that Ms. Silvestri proved to be an able leader, tested by the demands of the unprecedented pandemic, and will be focused on mental health and learning loss for our district. In terms of your question about what is my number-one priority? Hiring and retaining the best talent for our students, including, of course, addressing the staffing shortages that we currently have. We are competing with districts all over the region for the same talent. And so, I have been advocating, and a pilot was launched this year for a Grow Your Own program. It is a long-term strategy, but we have to try multiple things to get our own high school students to go into education and come back and teach in MCPS. So, I have many ideas in this regard, and I look forward to expanding on them throughout the night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wells.
Hi, yes, thank you, and good afternoon. Good evening to everyone. Again, my name is Esther Wells, and I am your candidate for Board of Education, MCPS, in District One. I am a certified public accountant in the state of Maryland for over 12 years with a master's in taxation. I started my career at Ernst &amp; Young, where I worked on the tax provision audits of multinational corporations. Currently, I lead the State Indirect Tax Department of a multi-billion-dollar enterprise of companies based out of DC with a proven track record of monetizing multimillion-dollar savings opportunities for customers and shareholders. I have a mom of two boys, a four-year-old and a nine-year-old who has developmental disabilities and attends MCPS. They are the source of my passion and advocacy for a brighter future for all learners. As your next board member, my top priority will be MCPS's finances. $3 billion is a lot of money. But I believe that with my professional financial statement background, I am able to bring adequate oversight, transparency, accountability to that budget, and that is a skill set that no one else that's running for the board has to offer the community. We are running out of ESTR funds in September of 2024, which were utilized for the wellness centers in our high schools to address the mental health crisis. Also, we are facing, but we're looking forward to the Maryland Blueprint for Education, and that is a significant investment in our students with a big-dollar ticket item attached to it, $4 billion a year over 10 years. And so, I believe that I am the best candidate to help the community be able to digest all of these changes in a sustainable manner and ensure that MCPS can focus on ensuring we have the adequate staffing in the classrooms for our students. Because as we have seen, the proficiency levels in reading and math needs to be the top priority, and that will be my priority, as I am a current parent of MCPS students, and we are in this together. So, I thank you in advance for your support on November 8th for Esther Wells Board of Education, and thank you again for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
Well, good evening. Hope everybody's doing okay this evening. My name is Brenda Wolf, and I'm the current president of the Board of Education. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I spent 27 years in the US Department of Education. I served as a civil rights attorney. I retired as the program manager for the National Assessment of Educational Progress. My top concern is equitable distribution of programs that are demonstrating effectiveness for our students. Education has been transformational in my life, and I want all of our students to have that possibility and opportunity in their life. And right now, I feel that while we have great programs all over the county, they have not been distributed evenly, and I would like to work on that. I have also have a great interest in making sure that whatever we are funding is effective for our students. Of course, there's been a lot of learning loss during the last two years, and we need to find programs that work, mental health supports that work, and things that will get our students back on the right track. So, I hope that I can count on you to return me to the Board of Education in November. I too have been endorsed by The Washington Post, and they said specifically, "We endorse incumbent Brenda Wolf in her bid for a second term, twice-elected president of the board. Ms. Wolf helped steer the schools through the pandemic's disruptions. She has championed the use of out-of-school time to extend learning, and we admire her commitment to addressing school system inequities. We have a lot of work to do, and I look forward to doing that work with you and for you. I also have a personal investment in the system. I have a grandson in one of our elementary schools, and my daughter is a teacher in our public school system. Thank you."
Thank you. Ms. Yang. Ms. Yang, are you muted?
Thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Yang. It's an honor to be here. I'm a mother of two MCPS graduates. I'm also a former teacher, data analyst, and a college and career counselor. Within the MCPS, I have worked in three high school cluster, cover from elementary school to high schools. My experiences have brought me to work in our MCPS high-poverty schools. Currently, I serve on the Board of the Art of Montgomery County, a nonprofit that serves people with disabilities. I will bring to the board a leadership record of building bridges across PTAs, nonprofits, and the student communities. These combined experiences are critical in developing and deciding policies that address the dynamic needs of our diverse community. Since I started my campaign, 24 elected officers, officials have endorsed me. I have the support of the teachers. I have received over 84,000 votes, 60% of the votes in a three-way race in the primary from grassroots supporters like you who trusted me to serve on the board. It is your endorsement that I seek. Now, we are facing a lot of issues: mental health, staff shortages. My number-one issue will be to re-ramp our community engagement. The last two years have been very difficult for our students and everyone involved in education. We know that education is not a one-size-fits-all. It's only when we hear you, listen to you, that our decision can become the right decisions. And that's exactly what I plan to do. I'm not incumbent by other responsibilities. I plan to devote myself full-time to this position and be present in the community. Look forward to share my community-driven plan with you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now begin questions in which I will direct a question to an individual candidate who will have 90 seconds to answer, and any candidate who wishes to rebut or to chime in after that response will have 45 seconds. This question is from Ms. Yang. "The results of the National Assessment of Educational Progress were released Monday, showing test scores dropped across the nation in reading and particularly math in fourth and eighth grade for high and lower-performing students. It's been reported the scores fell to levels not seen in two decades. Montgomery County students are among the millions nationwide who have suffered learning loss. Are Montgomery County Public Schools taking appropriate steps to address this learning loss? Why are we not? How would you address this need as a school board member?" 90 seconds.
Thank you so much for the question. The datas, I was a former data analyst. The datas are pretty disheartening. Before I dive into what we do, I do want to remind everyone that test scores doesn't equal achievement. But there are a number of issues that we need to address. Now, currently, we have put in online tutoring and after-school tutoring. We also have put in summer schools. Have these measures work effectively? So far, we have seen some success, but we have not seen a great improvement yet. There are a few things I would like us to consider. First, we cannot pretend the last two years didn't happen. We need to make sure that our students are ready to learn, that we address the mental health needs, and also provide support for the families that are experiencing difficulty. Secondly, we know that it is great instruction and programming that can improve our students' achievement. And in my plan, I would like to see us create clear pathways in science, technology, mathematics, and arts and engineering. These are the jobs for the future. And when we expose our students to opportunities, they will be more motivated to learn. Children cannot be what they cannot see. Another thing is, we need to put on hands-on experiences, harness the rich resources of scientific institutions, government agencies, thriving businesses to provide our students opportunities for inclusion. When we combine hands-on experience, give them clear future opportunity, pathway for future opportunities, we can uplift our students and put excitement back to learning and put relevance back into learning. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Mr. Joftis, you raise your hand.
Yeah, is this the appropriate time to respond?
Yes, 45 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So, the NAEP results completely mirror the results that we have in MCPS, where we had some gains in literacy over the last couple of years despite the pandemic, but some concerning drops in math. And we have a lot of work to do to make up the achievement gaps between our students of color and our white and Asian students. But this is a theme that I'm going to be very strong on during tonight's forum, which is, how do you get those changes from the board seat? And to me, the issue is making sure that this system is coherent, and that has not been the case for many years. And we need somebody who's able to help move the system in that direction, and I'll explain that more in the future.
Any other rebuttals or...?
I do. Sorry, my hand is a little hidden in my background.
Okay, go ahead. 45 seconds.
Yes, thank you. And so, some of the things that comes to mind is that MCPS has not started utilizing its third tranche of ESTR funds, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds that they receive from the federal government to address the learning loss. And so, one of the questions I have is, why is that? If we are all hands on deck, why have we not dipped into those funds yet? We continue to see in our special education program staff shortages. We continue to see in our elementary school staff shortages. When do their needs start to get met? And so, I think MCPS needs to do a lot more to ensure that our most vulnerable population of students, elementary school, special education, disrupting the school-to-prison pipeline, we need to do more. We have the funds, and we're sitting on it, and that's not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I would just add that, you know, we have the interventions that have been mentioned already, like summer school tutoring, professional development for our teachers. But there's the issue of access, and who is accessing the tutoring, for example? Is it consistent across the district? And some of our reporting has shown that, no, not everyone is accessing it. So, that's an issue that needs to be addressed. It's available, but who is getting access to it so that they can benefit from it? Thank you.
Ms. Rivera Owen.
Literally, I wrote tutoring is available for whom, and how do we make sure that those who need it the most have access to it? Literally, today I was speaking to a parent of a seventh grader, and, you know, she speaks English. She is very involved in the PTA. She had no idea that MCPS offered tutoring free of charge. So, you know, the news was depressing, K through eight, but the news was also depressing for our seniors and in the ACTs. So, we need to do a little bit better when it comes to access to those programs that we, those wonderful programs that we have that are not available to all.
All right. Ms. Yang, since this question was posed to you, you'll get 15 more seconds.
It is a great point that how do we get the information out? There are a large population. This is about the community engagement. Don't follow the traditional channel of communication. The trusted community partners is one way. We need to really invest our effort in getting our message out.
All right, we're going to move on. This question is from Mr. Joftis. "We hear from many local candidates, not just for school board, that Montgomery County schools were previously considered among the best in the nation but have fallen. Now, MCPS is not the top district in the state, and none of our high schools are currently ranked in the top 100 in the nation." Candidates aside, many education experts and observers will say school rankings are really just a ranking of affluence. However you slice it, what's standing in the way of MCPS giving children a world-class education? What should MCPS aspire to be?
Thank you for that question. So, this will be my opportunity to speak a little bit more about coherence. Today, I was in a meeting with all of the principals, vice principals, and central office administrators. And when Dr. McKnight was presenting for an hour, she called me out two times to talk about the importance of coherence. Basically, what coherence is, is a clear strategy for how we're going to improve the system, and then an alignment of systems, structures, resources, and culture to make that happen. When I'm teaching my education policy class, which I'm, excuse me, my education leadership class, which I'm teaching right now, and when I'm working with other systems, and now when I'm working with Montgomery County, the point is that we have not been coherent for a really long time. And the way we do that is by being very clear about four or five key initiatives that we want to move the system along by. Structured literacy is one of those that I've spoken about, and I'll go into more detail on that later. But once we've selected those four or five areas, it's really important that we're not only looking at outcome data, which MCPS is very, very good at collecting, but that we're setting performance management systems that create continuous improvement. That takes expertise, it takes perspective, and it takes experience. And that's why I have the support of three previous superintendents, because they understand that I can bring that perspective and help the system improve.
Thank you. Ms. Yang, 45 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Our county have gone through a lot of very dramatic change in the last 20 years. Our population has changed from a white-majority county to a minority-majority county. And when we talk about serving students, serving all students, we really need to consider, how are we reaching out to the different groups of communities? How are we serving the needs of our different group of communities? And my focus is on Montgomery County. And we have hired a superintendent, a deputy superintendent, chief academic officer to do the work of running the system. The more board members should be the eyes and ears of the public.
Thank you. Other rebuttals or input?
Esther does.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, and so, this is a very fitting question, because I believe Watkinsville High School journalism journalists, they wrote an article addressing this specifically. And essentially, what they're saying is the level of diversity that we have in Montgomery County in the Watkinsville cluster, for example, it's apples and oranges. And so, it's apples compared to oranges. And so, it is not fair for these reputable companies to attack our school system this way when our dynamics and our socioeconomic class and our families is a total different composition. And so, I reject that our schools are not top of the nation. I do agree that we have work to do, but we have excellent and best-in-class students, hands down, and we are producing great quality community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne?
Ms. Wolf, yes.
I have to agree with Ms. Wells, because we are producing any number of students who are doing very well. Our Poolsville High School is consistently ranked in the top two in Maryland. You know, these groups that put out these things, you're comparing apples and oranges here. But I do think we could do a better job with bringing our parents along and helping them to understand how they can help their kids. If we work on our communication and get out and reach out to our parents, they will then be able to work with their students at home, in addition to support what's going on in the schools. Right now, so many of them can't, because they don't understand a number of the things that we're doing, and even I can't understand some of it, because I have to tell you, I'm stumped on the way we teach math myself right now. And so, when you're trying to help, it's, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Can I jump in, Anne?
Yes.
So, I think, as I said in my statement, an incredible school system. People moved to this... an incredible school system. People moved to this county because of the kind of school system that we have. However, we do have really challenges. When you have a child who doesn't have a meal at night, but doesn't have a meal in the morning, that child's not ready to learn. When you have a child that is worried because their family is going to be evicted, that's not a child who's going to be ready to learn. When you have a child that they don't have access to healthcare, that's not a child that's going to be able to learn. So we need to look at this as a holistic approach as well. And we need to be advocates to ensure that, for example, uh, you know, we have, uh, more options for, uh, for, 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 for housing, not just even for our students, but for our teachers.
And the only thing I would add is, um, I, I think that we, uh, we ask, what should we strive for? We should strive to help our students meet their goals, whatever those may be. Uh, some of them want to go to college, some of them want to go to trade school. Uh, some of them, uh, don't know, so we need to expose them to many opportunities. Uh, but we have to give them a strong academic foundation in the elementary grades so that they can take advantage of all the marvelous opportunities that are now being created through the blueprint, as well as the expansion of dual enrollment, where now they can earn an associate's degree while they're still in high school. Imagine, uh, the possibilities there. So, uh, that is what we should be striving for. Thank you.
Thank you. This question is for Ms. Rivera Oven. The coronavirus pandemic exacerbated psychological risks for kids, led to increased behavioral issues, and precipitated a mental health crisis. The school system has moved to create wellness centers or wellness spacer, spaces in all of its high schools and hire dozens of social workers. But the district serves a diverse student body and community with many different cultures and language needs. How should MCPS position and build out its mental health supports to reach its many communities and serve the entire student body? Ninety seconds.
You know, this is, um, this is some, something that, um, not just our district, but many districts across the country are actually, um, suffering from, getting a well-diverse group of mental health workers. Now, I am, uh, I have been supportive of the wellness centers from day one. I was actually part of, um, a committee that, uh, that made this, um, this suggestion and the blueprint for the Latina Health Initiative had this suggestion twenty years ago. And one of the suggestions that we had in the blueprint was to actually, uh, be able to work with those professionals from different backgrounds. We're already here in our backyard, just like we do with nurses. We have a welcome back center that we started twenty-five years ago to ensure that they were able to transition to becoming, uh, full working nurses in the United States. We have the same talent in this county. We don't have to go far. Uh, we have professionals who, uh, speak English, who speak Cambodian, who speak Mandarin, who were professionals, mental health professionals in their countries. So we can actually do the same thing and foster that and be able to retain, um, and not look too far to be able to bring those professionals into our MCPS, uh, family. So I'm all for looking outside the box in order to make that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Wells?
Yes, thank you for that question. And so some of the things that immediately come to mind is this is a great opportunity for parents to get involved and to be equipped with ways that they're able to essentially act as a triage for their students to identify if their child is, um, you know, acting differently, is maybe isolating themselves, is having anger. I, I think it's important that we engage parents and empower them and equip them to be able to be part of the solution. Also, we need to engage our community partners, our crisis centers, every minds linkages to learning. Again, and I think with the tranche two of ESER funds were utilized for a lot of salary and wages for, um, staffing the wellness centers. And so potentially continue doing that for the SR three tranche to, you know, ensure that we're able to, um, meet the needs of the students in a sustainable way while we work, um, to, you know, plan our budget in the future years. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf?
You know, this is a very difficult area to deal with because of the language needs that we have in this county. I do agree that the parents can provide a lot of support, but they should not be the ones having to be the diagnostic on it just because they can speak the language. You know, a few years ago, um, Prince George's County needed, uh, needed teachers that could speak a different language. And they went to different countries and recruited people. I don't know that we've considered that, but I do know that we've looked at our system in the anti-racist audit. And we know that cultural competency is a big concern of ours and that we must address it. So we will be, we will be thinking of ways that we can do this.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Thank you for the question. We have a diverse community. And this is why it's so important that we can engage the community in the process. Now, the community cannot do diagnosis. But right now, the number one issue, we have put in all these centers. Do the community know how to assess the help, to request help? First thing we need to do is, um, put it on our website, the information of bridge, our bridges to wellness centers, and put it in multiple languages. Um, another thing that we can engage is, uh, we know students talk to other students more. So train peer leaders that can help our students navigate the system a little bit. We really need to, um, get all the great ideas from the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Joftis?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, yes, as I said, um, this is, I think, our number one priority. And we've invested as a board a significant amount of resources, not only the wellness centers, at expanding counselors and social workers, but as the Maryland Blueprint requires, we've also expanded, um, community schools, which provide a lot of wraparound, um, supports. The key now is to continue engaging the community, absolutely. And then also to be monitoring implementation of these role, of these different, um, interventions and supports. That's the key part now is understanding what's working, what's not working, and making adjustments. And that's why I think my experience as a professor of program evaluation comes in a lot of handy at this point.
All right, we'll move on.
May I say, since, can I have this fifteen seconds?
Sure.
Just very quickly, um, again, we have the talent here in our backyard. I think it's really important that we look, uh, into our diverse, uh, community. But we also look at the process of hiring. I hear from many folks who apply either with HHS or MCPS, that the process for hiring is very lengthy when it comes through, um, the HR process. So I think we need to look at that as well, so we don't lose talent to other competing counties.
Thank you. This question is from Ms. Wells. A Washington Post University of Maryland poll this month found that most Maryland voters do not support public school teachers discuss, discussing acceptance of LGBTQ people with elementary school students, but a majority do support teachers having those discussions with students in middle and high school. Do you believe MCPS addresses LGBTQ acceptance in age-appropriate ways? And does the system provide appropriate supports and resources for LGBTQ students? Ninety seconds.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And so I believe MCPS, and I've said this, um, on multiple occasions, MCPS has best-in-class policies when it comes to what we believe to be in the best interest of our students. And so I would, I would be, you know, um, follow the policies that MCPS has. I think that with MSDE setting the curriculum for what local school systems are able to do, that again, the, as the board, as we create these policies and we, you know, approve these curriculum, that we engage community stakeholders. We know that parents are the primary, uh, stakeholder in the education of their children. They are their child's first teacher. And they need to be engaged and viewed at minimum as equal partners in the education of the, our students. And so I will be involved in my community. I will engage with all stakeholders and ensure everyone feels that they're able to have a voice, they are able to be part of the curriculum, uh, process, and that ultimately our students are ready for the real world and they are aware of sexual, their sexuality and their identities at age-appropriate, uh, times. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I'll, I'll take a stab. Um, this is a really difficult issue. Um, I, I believe that, that MCPS is handling this very well. We do have really, um, I believe best-in-class policies on this issue. The, the issue from my standpoint is what was brought out with the anti-racism audit also, which is we've got very strong policies. We need to make sure that they're being implemented. Teachers need to understand at each grade level what they are and are not allowed to speak, talk about. Um, I personally believe in the, our policy allows for this, that even in elementary school, if an elementary school student goes to a teacher with concerns about his or her, their identity, um, that they should be able to speak to them, because we know that, uh, if we don't address that issue, it can lead to, um, cri- uh, crisis for the student.
Anyone else?
I would just add that, um, as has been said, um, MCPS has worked very hard on this issue with community groups. Um, it has become a leader in the country in terms of, of implementing, um, the state standards and are, created our own guidelines, uh, work with our staff to support them so that they know how to, um, address many issues that come up in the classroom. Um, I think our students are, um, are ready for this. I think that we're doing the right thing. Uh, it's so important for our students to feel welcome in their schools, to feel valued, all of our students, including LGBTQ students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Uh, yes, thank you for the question. Now, um, I think it is a bit important in elementary school curriculums that all our children's background and experiences are represented in our curriculum. In terms of discussion of, uh, LGBTQ issues, um, we have current policies. And we also, here is where our teachers' child development training come into hand, that they are professionals that have undergone child development training. And, uh, we will rely on their judgment. But as a system, we need to be a welcoming place and a safe place for all our students, including LGBTQ students. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera Oven?
So, uh, I think we're all plainly aware that there are efforts around the country to, um, uh, to erase certain populations that are not, your non-traditional look. And that certainly comes across for, for, um, for, uh, gender and sex, uh, sexuality orientation. So my take on that is, I think MCPS has done a really good job in looking at, um, how to implement this. But at, at the end of the day, it is our job as educators to educate, to find any kind of ignorance and that any kind of, um, discriminatory ways or thoughts are not the place at MCPS. So we cannot allow that kind of infiltration of thinking, of views or practices that people think, um, should, you know, should take place. Um, I guess especially, uh, LGBTQ plus students.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf?
I just want to agree with everything that's been said. We have very strong policies that are consistent with the state and, and MCPS, um, laws. What I do think though is that our policies involve the parents to the extent that it's practical. If the student has an issue that's going on in the home and shares that with the teacher, the teacher has to show respect for that student's privacy. But our goal is to involve the parents to the extent that we can when students come to us with issues. So I think that would be the first mode of operation at the elementary school level, to try and work with the parents to help them understand what the student is going through.
Thank you. Uh, this question is for Ms. Webb. Like districts across the country, MCPS has suffered significant attrition since the start of the pandemic. This year, the district moved to staff positions before the start of the academic year, but gaps remain in special education, um, among teacher specialties, and certainly among teachers of color. Retention is also a key issue in union negotiations. How should MCPS be addressing these particular staffing needs? Should MCPS be more aggressive in recruiting and retaining these professionals? Ninety seconds.
Who is this question for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I typo, um, for Ms. Wolf.
You know, uh, staffing has been a challenge, as you said, for us. And it is one of our highest priorities. We have created a Grow Your Own program, which we had an initial cohort this year of about fifteen students. I think that we need to expand that student. I think we need to look at compensation for our teachers. The blueprint will go a long ways towards providing that. However, we also have to recognize that the blueprint will create some issues of division among our staff that we need to think about. So we, we're gonna be on a double track there, trying to support those that, that the blueprint is supporting and professionalizing their career. And I think that has been a key factor that the teachers want to feel as though they are valued and that they are professionals. So compensation is a big issue. I think autonomy is a big issue. But along with autonomy, we have to allow for and provide for accountability for our teachers. And lastly, diversity is absolutely a must. This is one of the things that came out in the anti-racist audit. And we are definitely looking at that issue. And as, as I said, we are one of the most diverse school systems in the country. And we are starting with our own students.
Thank you. Ms. Wells?
Yes, and so one of the concerns or, you know, questions that lingers in my head is when we have the staff shortage right now, the superintendent states that we are ninety-nine percent staff. However, the one percent seems to be concentrated in special education, elementary school, which directly impacts children like my son. And so one of the things that, when I attended my son's open house earlier this month, I asked the principal, I said, you know, what does it look like on, at this school level? We have two hundred and ten schools. So I think it's important that we don't have concentrated staff shortage in one school, in one area, that we have teachers in one school that are having to cover multiple classes. And, and so I would really like to get more transparency and have a balanced conversation as to whether or not each school has an equity, right? Um, but ensuring that we, we have a balanced conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joftis?
Yeah, thank you. We, we do know that there's some really critical shortages. This past couple of weeks, we've been, um, working with Einstein and, uh, BCC, BCC on, uh, with a physics teacher and Einstein for three math teachers. And that's, that's problematic for sure. Um, and that's an area that, that the district is working very, very hard. I do want to be clear that this is a national shortage. It is a real problem. Math, science, special education was difficult to fill prior to the pandemic. Since the pandemic, um, it's only gotten, uh, worse. Um, and I think we need to start doing some innovative things. I've been proposing, um, extra pay for paraprofessionals, for example, of special education, which, um, um, I think would help to solve that problem.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera Oven?
Thank you. Um, I said it in, in, in other forums, how disappointed I, I was that, um, when we're hiring now new special education teachers, we're giving them, giving them an extra stipend. But yet we have not recognized those teachers that stayed throughout the pandemic loyal to making sure that our students were being taught. And I wish that, uh, we could ratify that and give a stipend to those teachers who actually stayed. Um, I would love to see, uh, exiting interviews of the teachers that are leaving, especially the teachers who look like our children. I just talked to two young men, one Latino, one African-American, who left the profession this year with tears in their eyes. He told me that, that, that was definitely something that he wanted to do, but they just felt that they were not supported. So we need to look at all those factors.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Thank you. Now, staff shortage is a national issue, but that require our local fixed. Um, in the last two years, I have collaborated with the system to do large, uh, outreach in some minority groups to increase the diversity of our staff. In some minority groups to increase the diversity of our staff. We partnered with seven nonprofit with great results. And I think this is an area that we can tap into potential new recruits. In addition, we need to think about attracting career changers. Now, I know that in other states, they have put in programs, uh, collaborating with university. To create, uh, to give tuition incentive, but with, uh, uh, service commitment. We should also explore that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, uh, with the issue of finding more special education teachers, for example. This new legislation, the blueprint, will incentivize nationally board certified teachers. But M C P S could create its own incentive program. For example, for teachers that are do- become duly certified in special ed and elementary or. Uh, E, English as a second language in elementary. And, and, uh, reward those people that are going to get those, um, certifications in high demand fields. We also need a more seamless path to alternative certification. So I already have a bachelor's degree. I'm teaching on a temporary certificate. How can we make it easier for those people to take those courses that they need? So that they can get their certification in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this question is for Ms. Sylvester. At the beginning of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. The Community Engagement Officer Program replaced the School Resource Officer Program. Rather than being stationed in individual high schools, CEOs are allowed to be in, uh. In some of those heights, in those high schools, um, for particular purposes and, and particular needs. Do you support the CEO program as it is, or should it be adjusted? If so, how? Ninety seconds.
Yeah, I think, um, police in schools, uh, discussion, um, is a red herring. Uh, we had a whole school year where we didn't have any police in schools. And the data, the disproportionality is the same in terms of arrests. So that tells me that we have a larger issue, um, in terms of what's happening in our schools, what's happening in our community. Having a, a CEO come and check in with the principal as the current model is, is. Is appropriate, I, in my opinion. Um, we do need to get to the root causes. You know, why are so many of our black and brown students, uh, getting arrested? Why are we, uh, why are administrators calling? Police when these serious incidents happen and, and they are happening. And so we need to get at the root cause. Um, we have a problem, uh, in our schools. We have a problem in our community. Uh, police have a role to play in the community. Uh, currently, as I said, the CEO model, as you mentioned. They come in, they check in with the principal. If they need to have a meeting, they have some space in the school. And then they keep going because they have a whole series of other schools to check in with. Thank you.
Mr. Joftis?
The first priority obviously is the safety of our, of our students and staff. And the question is, how do we, how do we make that happen? We've heard from enough students that they don't feel safe with the permanent pres- presence of police in schools. As Ms. Silvestri said, um, that we're still dealing with the disproportionality issue where. Our black and brown students are getting arrested at much higher rates than their white and Asian peers. I do support the transition to the CEO two point O program, recognizing that it's not. Fully, uh, popular, uh, including among our principals. So we need to make sure that it's working as intended. And again, that we're monitoring, that we're bringing in the, um. The, uh, mental health and other types of services. So that we can prevent some of these things from happening and then check on the progress of this, of the program.
Ms. Wells?
Thank you. And to be additive, um, I believe that, uh, CEOs are an important partner with our schools. As a mother of a black special education student, I believe that police officers are needed in times of imminent danger. What I would like us to focus the conversation on however, is ensuring our students feel safe and secure. So let's get to the root of why are they acting out in the first place? Why are they bringing these, you know, weapons to school? Is it because they have been bullied? They've been harassed? They're feeling discrimination? They don't feel safe? Let's get to the root cause and not just focus on the symptom. Because I think when we address the root cause and we disrupt the school of prison pipeline, maybe it's they're frustrated. But themselves and their schoolwork because they still can't read and they're in the fourth grade. So let's focus on the root cause and everything else will be a moot point. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf?
Uh, I have to say I agree with, with what Ms. Wells says. We can disrupt the pipeline. By providing quality academic services. But, and I do agree with the CEO program as it's, as it's currently. Operating as, as a, as the mother of a black son. Who went through some of the same issues that we're still talking about today. And the grandmother of a, of a black child in our school. I'm, I'm very concerned about this issue. But I think what we have to do is look at the discipline policies too. And look at the subjectiveness of some of the criteria. Because you're lacking cultural competency, you're applying disparate. Uh, you, you're doing a disparate application of discipline policies. All of that comes together to form the problem in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Thank you. Now, um, student safety is a top priority. I happen to work at Maguta High School, uh, which had a ghost gun, uh, shooting incident at the beginning of this year. Now, as a county, have we ever have a, a system-like conversation? What school safety look like? I don't think we have. I think the board has a role to play in having this conversation with our community. As an educator, I value relationship. We have community participation in many of the hiring. Principals on director level. For the CEOs that work in our schools. I propose that we will also allow community member to be part of that interview process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera Oven?
Uh, thank you. So, um, as someone who worked at the state attorney's office and someone who ran an after-school program for at-risk youth. I saw the disproportionality, um, that, uh, black and brown children were being suspended. Uh, we're giving detention at a much different rate than other groups. And then we have about, you know, the data that is there that about fifty percent of black students actually. Uh, were arrested during, during, um, during when we had the presence of our sorrows versus other communities. So we, we really need to look at that issue. I understand that, you know, the priorities, the safety of our students and so on. And as the program stands right now. My questions are, how is it being implemented? And is it being implemented, um, all across the board in a, in a, in a. In a way that it, all the schools are doing the exact same thing with the policy, or is it up to the discretion of each school?
Thank you. Um, we'll move now to the questions from folks in the audience. Uh, we, uh, have been fortunate to receive, I, I think dozens of questions. Um, we're only gonna get to a few, but really appreciate the, the thoughtful input. Um, this is, um, uh, a little bit more of a, of a speed round. Um, each candidate will have one minute to answer, um, this question. And, uh, if there are rebuttals, um, thirty seconds. Uh, here is, uh, the first question. Kara M asks, kids can't learn. If you can't get them to school, what will you do to ensure that transportation is well-run and reliable? Uh, the order for this question will be Ms. Wolf, Ms. Wells, Ms. Rivera Oven. Ms. Yang, Ms. Silvestri, and Mr. Joftis. Ms. Wolf, one minute.
Thank you for the question. Yes, transportation has been a problem. Bus drivers hiring and retaining them is a problem because they don't work a full-time job. I think one thing we need to do is look at providing a pathway. So that they have other opportunities during the day to earn a forty-hour-a-week salary. Um, you know, this has been a great concern over here, at least in the East County. Because it looks to me as though a number of the same schools are currently being impacted by the bus laws. So we're looking at making sure that there is a rotation so that no one school. Or is affected every single week by this issue. And we are currently having like nineteen bus drivers in the pipeline. But it is, it is a hard problem because once they get a C D L license. They move on to something like maybe driving for Amazon where they can work forty hours a week.
Yeah, and so, uh, this is a concern that I've had and I testified at the Board of Education earlier this year. About the transportation when my son started the extended school year this summer. His school bus was about forty-five minutes late. And we sat outside on the front porch with his backpack and lunchbox in hand. And I can just see his face go from happy to anxiety and frustrations, like what happened. And I think we need to ensure that we provide transportation to our students. Because that is a way to ensure they have access to education. And so I know in our neighboring jurisdiction in Fairfax County, they have an app, an app. That parents can have available to them to receive timely communication as to the status of the bus. For example, we also maybe have smaller school buses. A special education bus has a handful of children. Use our smaller bus where you wouldn't require driver to have a C D L license. So I think we need to be creative. But there are ways to fill, close the gap. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um. Sorry. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, okay, don't trust me for those seconds. Um, so I, um. I, I saw this firsthand at somebody who runs a food insecurity, a nonprofit in the up county. Uh, especially during the summer, we actually had parents calling us in panic. Cause we do some food districts who saying that their children were never picked up for the summer school, uh, for a few days, actually, not just a, a one-time thing. I saw somewhere that, uh, M C P S covers over a hundred thousand miles per day, per day. Uh, that's a lot of bus drivers that, that we need. Um, so I know that this is not something unique to M C P S. I, you know, you, you see it all the time, advertising, uh, pretty churches county, uh, DC and everybody. Um, uh, you know, uh, asking for more drivers. Um, what I hear from the drivers, however, is sometimes that they feel that the communication is not very clear. And that they feel sometimes that the discipline issues are not being taken into heart on, in their buses. And that they, they turn all this information and nothing gets done. So to me, it's a little bit just deeper than not having, uh, you know, but it's having the support for our support staff as well. So I would like to see that done as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Thank you for the question. Bus not coming to the bus stop. Communication of disruptive of service not delivered to the parents waiting at the bus stop. What does this say? That means we failed to provide the service. What's the role of the board member in this situation? We need to keep the system accountable. The board has one employee, that's our superintendent. The tool the board has is to evaluate our superintendent. I believe in the collaborative work with our superintendents. I believe in bridge building, but also is someone that can ask difficult questions without being adversarial. So I hope to work with the system and, and ask a difficult question to urge the system to change. And do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester?
Yes, um, as has been mentioned, people need full-time jobs with benefits. And so if other, uh, employers are offering that, we should offer that as well. And we can do that because we have offered to some bus drivers where they can be lunch aids. Or fill other positions while in between their bus routes to make them, uh, full-time with benefits. So that's one key strategy, uh, in order to alleviate the bus driver shortage. We also need to, um, advertise that we train, we pay people to get the C D L license. They are paid while they're being trained. You can say that for other, uh, companies. And so I think we need to make that a lot clearer to our community. And finally, we have to modernize our bus routing software. We are still, uh, using very antiquated systems. And by modernizing that software, which is hopefully coming, uh, soon. We'll be able to run more efficient bus, bus routes, uh, with the staff that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joftis?
Yeah, I don't have much to add to what Ms. Silvestri said, but, uh, you know, just acknowledging that. A kindergartner standing on a street, on a corner, waiting for the bus that doesn't come is, is a scary and. Unhealthy thing and we definitely need to fix that. Um, I do want to note that our buses drive the comparable distance of four times around the earth a day. And we've, we've missed the, um, we've missed some opportunities in terms of picking kids up. And we've also had to double routes, which means kids are getting home at sometimes, uh, very late. Um, but again, M C P S has done relatively well compared to local, regional districts and districts nationally. But there's still a ways to go and I, I concur with everything, uh, Ms. Silvestri said about how to, how we need to address that.
Anyone else? Oh, all right, fifteen seconds.
Yeah, in, in terms of brainstorming, let's break the silo. Work with Department of Transportation and Department of Planning of our county. Map out the ride-on or metro bus routes and maybe there is overlap or maybe there can be adjustment. Use our bus attendance to supervise by use existing public transportation.
Thank you. Here's our second audience question. Yeah, Anne C asks, do you believe that parents should have input on which books and materials are included in the school library catalog? The order for this question will be Mr. Joftis, Ms. Silvestri, Ms. Yang, Ms. Rivera Oven, Ms. Wells, and Ms. Wolf. Mr. Joftis, one minute.
Thank you. I, I believe parents should be engaged in, in as many, as all, in all decisions regarding the schools. My concern has been, um, and I've said this at a board meeting that, um, I don't. I'm concerned about this move, uh, nationally to, um, to get books out of the libraries. Montgomery County actually has a, again, a very sound policy for parents who have concerns about books that are in the. Um, in their libraries. There's a, a, a way to, um, uh, uh, protest that. Um, and a process for considering that. But as a board member, I don't think we should be making decisions about which book should or should not be in there. And in fact, I think we should be erring on the side of keeping, um, keeping books in the, in the library. Um, and available for those who, who want them.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester?
Yeah, we have, um, a good process to, of experts that review the books that get into our classrooms and our, and our libraries. Um, there is a process for parents to participate in things, curriculum selection. Uh, there's a process to challenge a book, uh, that you don't, uh, you quote a question. Um, but we are a school system and we are, uh, dependent on our school leaders and our school experts. Um, to go, to follow these processes and make the best decisions for our school system. So I, 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 as a parent can say, I like this, but I don't like this, so I don't want my child to do this. Um, you know, if I have a problem with it, I'll follow the process, challenge the system and, uh, and, uh. Have, have a good outcome as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Yang?
Thank you for the question. Now, I understand the role of parents' concern about the materials that the students are exposed to. Um, in our schools in the past, the age appropriateness, uh, has been brought up. Should it be a fourth grade material or seventh grade reading material? This is where our process, uh, of engaging parent conversation and our school staff work. Now, as an educator, uh, we really need to, um, understand that. Uh, how important is for us to develop the critical thinking skills of our students? Ensure is we are not teaching students what to think, but really focused on, um. How to think, how to have research tools to decide on your own opinion. Um, and also I want to touch, uh, upon that I am against any effort of censorship. Of, of free speech. So book banning, uh, it's a big no for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera Oven?
Uh, foremost, uh, as a parent who, who was very engaged and, uh, and, uh. From being a, a whole monitor to being, uh, out at recess with her kids. Um, I, I know that that process exists. It's not the best well-known process or the most accessible to certain groups of parents. So we definitely need to do a better job on that. And also for parents who English might not be, you know, they might not be fluent to want to have a say in that process as well. And the whole, the, the whole thing we have in an education system is to educate, right? So we have 160-plus thousand students. We have a good process. Again, we can do better for the access to the process to, to all parents. But again, I am not going to be in the role of censorship. My family came here because from a country that where there was censorship on many levels. And I can tell you, that's not a good thing. So our role is to educate. We have a process. I would like to see the process being a little bit better so all parents can actually be able to have access to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wells.
Yeah, and so to be additive, I agree with what has been said in terms of there is a robust policy that MCPS, MCPS has. Again, they have best-in-class policies where I think MCPS gets tripped up every single time. It's no one knows about these policies. While doing my research for various questionnaires that I've answered throughout the campaign, most community members are unaware that this process exists. And so I think MCPS needs to do a better job of communicating with stakeholders and parents of what they have in place if parents feel like this is something that they would like to challenge. Also, at the end of the day, I want us to focus on allowing our children to learn to read and become proficient readers and bookworms and to expand their, their brain and their minds, right? So we need to get books in children's hands. We need to focus on them learning how to read. And we need to ensure that we align these books in the libraries to the curriculum of MCPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
Let me just say that this has come up, as you know, because of some of the national conversation going on. And as a board member, I'm really concerned about the effort of some in our country to sort of actively suppress what I consider uncomfortable topics. We do have a policy to remove from consideration if a parent wants a particular book for a child. But I think that we are trying to teach our students to be critical thinkers, to be, to have intellectual curiosity, and we want to provide academic rigor. So I'm not for censorship. We have experts that have looked at the books and, and my estimation, age appropriate is the only standard we should be looking at because we want to develop students who are able to think critically for themselves. You're on mute.
I just managed to mute myself when I meant to unmute. Thank you. Um, all right, we will do our third and final audience question. Sandra L. asks, there is scientific consensus that students are better off when middle and high school begins at 8:30 AM or later. This ties into the mental health and other wellness priorities we heard about. If elected, what is your position on addressing this important issue? And what will be your timeline to address this? And, and I will say, separate from, from Sandra's question, I understand that, that this is a, a topic that the school system has, has studied in, in recent years. And, and I think there was some sort of time adjustment, maybe within the last few years for high school. But I will let you all answer that. The order for this question will be Ms. Sylvester, Ms. Yang, Mr. Joftis, Ms. Well, Ms. Rivera Oven, Ms. Wolf, and Ms. Wells.
Thank you. Yeah, the research indicates that later school times is better for adolescent development. I have a 15-year-old myself and worry every day about her getting enough sleep just for her wellness so that she can be well, not have a lot of stress, and of course, get the most out of her day. But as all decisions in our school system, it impacts everyone from not only the students, the adolescents, but it impacts the younger students who would have to be at the bus stop in the dark much earlier. It impacts working students, working high school students that go to work after high school. It impacts teachers, so many of whom signed up to start early and early so they can be home with their own fam. And so, as I said, I think it's something that the school system needs to look at again, especially after we get our new transportation software. Until we do that, it, it, it will hinder our progress in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yang.
Okay, the later start time has merit as evidenced by research and also by my own experience as a mother. But it is important that most of our students, staff, and family are on board if this is to become a reality. So I am committed to a study of later school start time to address the variety of needs like after-school care, high school sports, and contractual issues with our employee associations. Now, as you know, these kind of studies can be costly and lengthy. So I propose that MCPS requests our county's Office of Legislative Oversight to conduct the study. Then the board can act accordingly based on the study. And as a prudent measure, we can also pilot later start time if that is the decision at one restricted area to try out first. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Mr. Joftis.
Yeah, thank you. I, I definitely struggle with this with my 17-year-old. It's a battle every day to get up to go to school, and I know she's exhausted all the time, so it's a real issue. We did, I think it was three years ago, put this time back by about 20 minutes. But I think we need to do more. I do like the idea of a pilot. The challenge of a pilot is that our system is so interconnected from a transportation and after-school activity perspective that it makes it very, very challenging to do that. But I am definitely supportive of, of, of doing, of, of putting start times later, assuming we can find a good way to do it and assuming we can get the public support and buy-in to, to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera Oven.
Um, so five years ago, I was one of those parents who signed that petition because I had at that time two teenage boys. And it definitely was a task to get those young men out the door awake. So I know the challenges, but I also know the mental health impact of it that it has on, on young people. However, we are a system of 161,000 students, as Ms. Sylvester mentioned. You have to take into consideration so many things, including the geography of Montgomery County. You have areas, you know, that are very well-lit and so on. The area I live in, we have a lot of country roads. We have a lot of, you know, so the idea of having elementary school kids in some of these country roads in the dark scares me. So it's not so easy, but I would love to look at it and see if, but I do thank the, this existing board for passing the 20 minutes because it made a huge difference in the life of my senior.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
Everything just about has been said about this issue. We did change the schedule 20 minutes, as was mentioned earlier. And it would impact a number of things. But one thing that it will impact significantly is sports because the high school students, you know, have a very, and middle school students have a very active sports agenda. I personally am willing to consider look, doing a study to look at it and see if there's a possibility for moving any time around. But I can tell you, we have a number of older students who watch their younger siblings when they come home. As, as Ms. Owen said, over here where I live, there are no sidewalks. So they're standing basically kind of on a corner in the street. It would be very dangerous in the dark. People have, teachers have set their schedules based on things. There is a, a domino effect to any change, and it would, would require some real study.
Thank you. Ms. Wells.
Yes, and so one of the priorities of MCPS has been equity. And as a student, a graduate, a graduate of MCPS, my family, we migrated to United States in search of the American dream. And I was a latchkey kid growing up. And at the age of 14, I started working. And so it was really important that when I was in high school, to have those hours after school to be able to earn income and provide for my family. And so from an equity perspective, I am open to, you know, engaging in pilots and, you know, agreeing with everything else the candidates have said. But we need to ensure that any unintended consequence, for example, of, of causing these students to be, to drop out of school because they need to meet their immediate needs of their household before they can worry about their future. And if they don't have adequate hours after school to work and provide for their family, they may make that hard choice and go into the workforce immediately. And so I do understand both sides. I am very open to engaging in dialogue and doing our homework. But it is important we take an equity perspective for the immigrant families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, we're going to wrap it up. On behalf of Bethesda Beat and Bethesda Magazine, thank you to all the candidates who joined us for sharing your views. Thank you to the attendees for choosing to spend your time with us, also for the many terrific questions that came up in the chat. Thanks for spending your time learning about the candidates ahead of the general election, which is coming up November 8th. Please keep reading and supporting Bethesda Magazine and Bethesda Beat. We appreciate you and have a great night. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.